Get my notes ready to go with the live stream. All right, had to clear the meeting open. Welcome everyone to today's council controlled organisations subcommittee meeting. It's lovely to see you all again. Etu iti karakia, please stand for the karakia.
Ataka te hau kite uru, fa'ataka te hau ki eton. Kia ma kina iuta, kia ma tara tara kita. Ehi ake ana te atakura, he tio, he huka, he houhoo, ti hei mua.
Thank you, everyone. As usual, please let me or the democracy advisor know if you intend to leave the meeting councillors. And morning tea will be at 10.30, assuming that we are running to. Which we usually do, so I have apologies from Mayor Foster. I haven't received any other apologies. She's not a member of this committee. She's not on the subcommittee. Yeah, it's all good. Excellent. I move that we accept the apologies from Mayor Foster. Can I have a second, please? Councillor Fohn, thank you. I've now put the motion which has been moved and seconded. Our voting is not working, so I'm going to go by show of hands kicking it old school. So if I can have a show of hands to accept the apologies from Mayor Foster. That looks unanimous, thank you. I call on members to declare any conflicts of interest. Oh, how exciting. I see none. Confirmation of the minutes. Remove the motion that we approve the minutes of the council controlled organisation subcommittee meeting from the 18th of November 2020. Having been circulated, they be taken as read and confirmed as an accurate record of that meeting. Do I have a second, councillor O'Neill, thank you. Are we going to go by hands again? Let's do it. Show of hands, please. That's unanimous, thank you. There are no items not on the agenda. There were no requests for public participation and that gets us through the formalities. So, welcome everyone. We've got presentations from our CCOs. Everyone's got 15 minutes as usual, which includes time for questions. And first, lucky first is the Wellington Zoo Trust. So we've got Karen and Craig with us this morning. Good morning, I'm happy to hand over to you. I think you're. You reckon.
Up to you, Karen, you find.
I think you're fine where you are.
As long as you use the microphone.
That's the key thing. Otherwise, the online people, of which there will be so many, online people will not be able to hear your present.
Okay. All right, moderna everybody. Craig and I are here to talk you through, would very quickly do quarter two highlights and then Craig's going to take you through the statement of intent. This is our strategy, just as a reminder for everybody in terms of the things that we're focusing on for the zoo for the next, until 2023. When we review the strategy again. Looking at quarter two, just a quick few highlights, because I know that's not the focus of today's meeting. We did start a new staff induction tool called Tick Box, which is a New Zealand developed product. And it's really fantastic because we can also include our board on Tick Box as well. So they can get all of the strategic documents, all of the board papers, all of those things can go on Tick Box for them. Or any presentations that our staff give at board meetings. But also for our staff, it's a great way for them to have an online induction that they can work through at their own pace. And really reasonable in terms of the cost for this. We renewed the collective agreement with the union for the next three years, so that's all good. We launched, actually the World Association of Zoos and Aquariums launched the sustainability strategy, protecting our planet. And also the IZD International Zoo Educators Social Change for Conservation Strategy. So I was involved, actually Amy and I were both involved with the sustainability strategy. And Amy is on the IZD board, so she was involved with the other one. We officially opened the Wellington Green Gecko, Moko Kakeriki and Pittinga Etie during quarter two as well. So that's, they've been really successful. To Pittinga Etie is our reptile breeding facility. And we've had a lot of people come through and look at it. And we've had a lot of interest from donors for that project as well. So that's been quite a successful project. So it's really focusing on Wellington Green Geckos and the breeding of them. We assisted with the translocation of 73 Tuatara in human care into the wild, in the islands, in the, in the sounds. So that was quite interesting. Our vets were involved and some of our reptile keepers as well. And we also developed partnerships with Changemakers Resettlement Forum and Wellington City Mission. Okay. Over to you, Craig.
Um, Airena Kato. Statement of intent, you've seen and obviously read, it's focused on rebuild and regeneration in a post COVID-19 environment. I reflected, just as we were coming in here on our Zoom call about this time last year, where we. We got through the meeting pretty well, but, but also just, it was 12 months ago and how much has changed in that time. And it's a real. It's a real privilege to be here, actually still here, still functioning, still with a dedicated team. And focusing on how we can build on the, the hard work that we endured through the whole, and still do, through the COVID-19 pandemic. Our strategic direction is to align with Wellington City Council's vision, wellbeing strategies, wellbeings and strategies. And looking at Tiata Kura, our first to zero waste program. And of course, the Trewaumari policy. Part of that will work, see us work strategically with other CCOs. And again, that might be around the Trewaumari policy as well, looking to assist where we can and steal shamelessly where that's possible as well. United Nations SDGs, we've selected six of those goals that we think are appropriate for the zoo to focus on. And we'll be working on those through the course of this year and future years. And part of that is obviously our commitment to sustainability in terms of the toy two carbon zero certification. We're underway with our Kanahi Katiya program. And obviously underway with our snow leopard project, looking for completion next year. Demolition is underway. Resource consent has been granted. And of course, I just remind councillors that we are looking to fund 25% of that through contributions secured by the zoo. We've got to ensure that our renewals budget is used wisely. We think the zoo is a real institution for the city and for the region. And as, as trustees for that, we have to make sure that it is maintained, fit for purpose and a resilient asset. Of course, health, safety, wellbeing. It's critical that we succeed in that for the safety and wellbeing of our team and for our visitors. April will see us doing our first external audit since 2017. We'll also in April have a work safe audit. And each year, we also have a full annual board workshop. This year will be focused on critical risks and again, all in April. So we've got a busy April coming up. Look, there are the points I want to make, but as I say, reflect on our year of COVID. Acknowledge and thank the council for their support. And also acknowledge management staff and the support of our trustees and keeping the zoo true to its strategy, true to its values. Kia rukua taka tato, happy to answer questions.
Kia ora, thank you Karen and Craig. Do I have questions councillors? Councillor Young, sorry, I think I missed your hand earlier. Would you like?
So I'm a bit slow on my notes because I do it electronically because I'm very new age. Unlike some of my colleagues, so sometimes I have to refer back. So on page 119, there's a reference to remuneration adjustments. Sorry, let me just go back. Oh God, I'm not that new age, I'm just faking it. So I'll ask you the next one instead. First, so first of all, congratulations on your Qualmark Enviro Gold Award. That's fantastic. You know, I do think the zoo is wonderful. As you know, I'm not a great zoo fan, but it's a wonderful, wonderful little zoo. So just tell me, so what does the Qualmark Enviro Gold entail and what does it mean?
So Qualmark is a, they actually do tourism certification. And so to get Enviro Gold, anything through Qualmark is a huge task. It has to be done annually. So unlike our Zoo and Aquarium Association accreditation that's every three years, this is done annually. And it's huge amounts of paperwork that we have to prove to Qualmark that we're actually meeting sustainability goals.
Is it an international standard?
It's a New Zealand standard, yeah. And so they, yeah, so the tourism industry really rates Qualmark. And so the, the branding is if you're Qualmark certified, then you've got, you know, skin in the game, so to speak, for tourism.
Right. Okay, so then, so the next one, now that I found the page, thank you, is it says, as part of your remuneration strategy. You're reviewing all tier four roles.
Yes.
Once sized appropriately, any remuneration adjustments will be incorporated, yada, yada, yada.
Correct.
So what does that mean in simple English?
Okay. So we have a REM strategy that we agree with the board that looks at over a five year period. We look at each tier in the organisation. So obviously tier one is the executive, tier two, so on. So tier four is our staff. So they've, all their jobs have been resized this year through strategic pay.
So does that mean job losses or?
No, no. What we do is we review all the job descriptions and then we send those job descriptions to strategic pay. They then size them according to market. So, and we pay at the top of the not for profit and the bottom quartile of local government. So the median between those two. So they give us what the market says for those two areas, for not for profit and local government. And then our REM strategy is we pay between 85% and 115% of that median.
Right, okay.
So then we adjust our salaries accordingly. So each year when we do our REM round, we look at the sizing for whatever tier we're looking at. We also look at relativities adjustments and we look at living wage.
So, for example, say I was a lion keeper, say I was looking out for the snow leopards.
Yes, I can see this.
Yeah. So, I mean, what would I get paid?
Oh. I'll probably talk in a band rather than.
Yeah, but no, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Things are, we are live streaming in terms of privacy. So depending on what level you were as a keeper, because we have three different levels of keepers, level one, two, three. You would start from around 50K up to about 65.
Okay, thank you. And then the last one is just, so I only did three days of Latin. I told the nuns that if I met a centurion, I'd go to night classes and I did geography instead. There's a plant here that you talk about, Dactylanthus tape, what is it?
It's a little endangered plant that we release the seeds into Zealandia. So it's one of our local conservation projects that we support. So we had local. So we had local conservation grants that people applied for, so the people from, I think it was Orari actually, Orari in Zealandia, were involved in this project, so we actually funded them with some money to actually make that happen in Zealandia.
So does it have a sort of...
A common name?
Yeah.
I have no idea.
That's a funny land up there. Thank you for all your work, because it is, you know, the zoo is...
Sorry, Woodrose, it is, it's the Woodrose, thank you.
Woodrose, it's a parasitic native plant in New Zealand, and it was released at Zealandia with the help of the zoo and other conservationists, and about seven different iwi came together to release, it was a really emotional experience.
Thank you.
So I love this plant.
Yeah, I know, it's a very, very important plant, I know this.
So thank you, and I really do appreciate all that you do at the zoo, which is quite something, knowing my...
Yes.
I was just going to ask a question, then we'll come to councillor Foon. I was just wondering if you could talk us through the pressures on your renewals program, because one of the things you noted is you asked for a little bit of additional funding for renewals, which wasn't granted, so if you could talk to us about...
Yeah, I mean...
...where you're at with that.
It's been a very interesting process, looking at the asset management planning and the renewals, and we have flagged in the last few years that we probably are running well below our depreciation, which in itself is a clunky measure for asset management anyway, but it's really the only one we've got at the moment. So one of the, our thinking is that if we can have an uplift in renewals of 200 to 300 per annum, it means that we don't have to have big capital investment, as we had to with the zoo capital, capital plan a few years back, so that we can keep the asset maintained to the level it needs to be. And a lot of it is around animal welfare and around staff welfare, because if we look at the giraffe house, for example, we've just spent $400,000 on it alone because of managing giraffes in new ways, around safety for staff, and also a better welfare outcome for the animals. So a lot of the renewals budget is spent on animal welfare, staff welfare. So we're just not hitting the mark, so we find that we miss things every year, and so when you're dealing with dangerous animals, you know, we've had to spend a lot of money on, you know, a lot of metalwork, which is very expensive, you know, making sure the staff are safe when they're dealing with dangerous animals. And so those are the things that take priority, and so then other things miss out, and then what you start to see is what happened with the zoo last time, that the asset starts to decline, and then you end up with a place that's not very loved. And so what we're trying to do is say, well, we want to preempt that, and say, if we, if we don't, we took the Lion Project out of our statement of intent because of the huge capital burden that would have put on the city, but the renewals budget, asking for that uplift, allows us to do projects within that budget that are going to give us a lot of similar outcomes. For example, we did the chimp park over two years out of our renewals budget, and that was 1.3 million, but it was actually able to be done over that period of time, and we got really great outcomes for those animals and for our people. So that's our thinking, being more strategic about how we spend the money, and how much money we actually need to do it. You know, if I look at zoos all around the world, we used to talk about zoo assets being about a 25-year lifespan, we're now talking 10 years. So what we need to do is think, well, what's 10, what's the next 10 years look like in terms of maintaining the asset to the quality it needs to be as a progressive zoo? Because we don't want to go back to the old days when it was not a progressive zoo. Yeah, yeah, and chimps pulling out bars and throwing them around the heads of, their heads, yeah, no, we, we don't want that again. So renewals is actually absolutely critical to, to how we develop the zoo and how we maintain a progressive zoo going forward, yeah.
Councillor Foon.
I was after the renewals question, thank you councillor Conde, but I do have another question. Thank you for all you do for Wellington, and, you know, we know that all the work your team do to be a progressive zoo, and it is, yeah, we are really proud of all the work that gets done there. But also, you know, as your leadership in an organisation, and I, and I know, you know, the way that you've aligned yourself globally, and then you've aligned to the SDGs, and I guess, you know, as you know, something I've been advocating for is that as CCOs, you work to show leadership for each other, but also for council, on how we can progress. But I guess particularly, would you say that that alignment to SDGs would be useful for all of our organisations? Or do you think that might be...
I probably have a biased view of that. I, I mean, I was the chair of the writing committee for the Waza Sustainability Strategy, which is looking at the 17 SDGs for our global community of progressive zoos. So, I mean, I've got a fair, I'm quite biased about it, I think it's a really good framework for us to use around sustainability, and the six that we've chosen, we spent about six months working with Toitu as to which SDGs were the most appropriate for us, because doing all 17 is unrealistic, and you've just got to make sure that you've got the ones that are going to be appropriate to you. And whether or not we can agree across all the CCOs and the council, whether, whether one or two, or, you know, that we focus on those, would be really quite something, I think. And it's really interesting, because the World Business Council for Sustainable Development, the director of the SDG is presented at our Waza conference last year, and he was saying that all the work they've done looking at SDGs across the world in terms of business, the one that is the least well-done is life below water. And I think to myself, if any country can do life below water, it should be New Zealand. So why would we not focus on something like that, that is close to all our hearts as New Zealanders, and really focus on that when it's the least well-done by business? Because people don't really know what to do with it. So focusing on something like that, and obviously for us, life below water and life on land are very important for us, but, you know, that's, you know, the World Business Council for Sustainable Development has fantastic resources that we can use, they're brilliant, the guy who is their director, brilliant guy, you know, he really knows the SDGs. And so there's a lot of resources available to us as businesses to actually do that.
Kia ora. Thank you Karen and Craig, we really appreciate that. My kids are very excited, they're going to a Lima encounter during the school holidays.
Excellent.
So that was a Christmas present from grandparents.
Lovely boys.
So they're excited to be visiting you shortly.
And these are our snow leopard cubs, just to make you feel good.
Are these actually, like, these are the ones who are going to come to Wellington?
Yeah, they are. Asha and Mandu. They're just a bit over 12 months now, so they'll be about two when they arrive.
So where are they now?
They're at Melbourne Zoo. Yeah, they were born at Melbourne Zoo. They are, sisters. Hopefully they'll like each other when they get a bit bigger.
All right, thank you so much. Yes, very exciting. All right, and then we've got Wellington Regional Stadium Trust, Kia ora Shane, welcome.
Kia ora councillor Conde.
I was, I was following you on Twitter, and I can't decide whether you're the luckiest stadium operator, or whether you're bad luck for the city, because a couple of times you had major events in your stadium, and then we immediately had the, the next day or the day after, we had the little go up.
I call that lucky.
But I was thinking of you both times, that must have been very stressful.
Yes, yes. Look, it is stressful, but at the end of the day, we can't control it, so we really just have to roll with it, and, and we're prepared for that for the rest of the year, and inevitably, you know, it could happen again, so it is what it is, and we roll with it. So I'll just make a few general comments in relation to the H2 report and the draft statement of intent, and then take some questions. There's a chart on page 374, I won't ask you all to scroll through to it, but it just shows the total crowds at the stadium for the first 22 years now. Through to FY19, we averaged half a million people at the stadium per year. For the last two years, this year and last year, we'll average less than half of that, and although none of this is a surprise, it's quite stark to see the impact of COVID on one, on one bar chart, and that's had a major bearing on our financial result for this year and, and last year. The reality is our business only really operates at alert level one, and even then, we need open borders to be firing on all cylinders. All of that said, the attendances that we have had are much better than some of the doomsday scenarios we were talking to you about a year ago, when we were forecasting 12 or 18 months with no events whatsoever, we didn't know. And I speak to friends in the industry around the world on a regular basis, and, you know, they do look at us with envy, so we're very grateful, although it's been a bleak period, we are very grateful for the events that we have been able to hold, including the Bledisso Cup in October, and of course, the 660 concert in February, which was the largest concert anywhere in the world in the last 12 months, so that was fantastic. In relation to events and the outlook, obviously the Transatasmun Bubble announcement yesterday is a positive for us, that's the first stage in opening borders. It means hopefully we'll be able to host a Wellington Phoenix game at some stage in May, which will be more of a celebration and a welcome home, which should be fantastic, they haven't played at home in over a year, so that'll be very good. It means that the Transatasmun Super Rugby competition will hopefully go ahead from, from May, so certainly there's light at the end of the tunnel. The event pipeline and the inquiries is very active. We have a lot of inquiries for concerts for next summer. Understandably, promoters are somewhat reticent about pulling the trigger at this stage, just given, given the uncertainty, and ultimately, whether we host big shows will depend on two things, it'll depend on international borders, and it'll depend on vaccine rollouts. So fingers crossed if everything goes our way, next year could be one of our busiest ever, but again, it'll need a lot of things to go our way that are outside of our control, so we're prepared either way. We do have one show confirmed, Guns N' Roses in November, and that is, that is selling well. Beyond concerts, we're working on a number of large sports and non-sports events for next year, and so as I said, there is reason for optimism. The other big news from an events perspective was the announcement on Thursday that Wellington has been chosen as a host city for the FIFA Women's World Cup for 2023, that is a tremendous honour. I don't think a lot of Kiwis realise how big this event is going to be. From an event management, from an overlay, from a stadium perspective, it's going to be significantly bigger than the Rugby World Cup in 2011. The standards from FIFA are going to be unlike anything we have seen before in, in New Zealand, so that planning for that event starts in earnest now. And just from an events perspective, we do believe that the stadium has a major role to play in the post-economic, post-COVID economic recovery in the city, and we'd continue to encourage the, the city council to support events, and particularly those events that bring in large number of visitors into, into Wellington. With Guns N' Roses, for example, 68% of the tickets that have been sold are outside of the Wellington region, so, you know, that, that'll be fantastic. Touching on capital projects, we're near the completion of the next stage of the concourse upgrade, if you do get a chance to have a walk around the concourse, you'll just see how fresh and modern the whole place looks now. We're installing a heritage walk in May, which will celebrate the great moments of the first 28, 20 years of the stadium, and in the final stage of the concourse upgrade, we'll be redoing the floor, it's had 10 million people walk over it over the last 20 years, so it's had a bit of wear and tear, and, and that will, that will be the finishing touch on that piece of work. The resilience work on the Fran Wild Walk is well underway, and we hope to have that completed by the end of the year. And the next major project will be resilience work on the stadium building itself. The, the main work will be focused on additional support for the floors. The NBS is good, it's between 70 and 80% at IL3, but the engineers have recommended that we could do some more work, and we intend to heed that advice. We, we did, we did request support for this through the LTP process, but we have been informed, at least in the draft plan, that that has been unsuccessful, and we will make a submission as part of the consultation, just to have that reconsidered. The original request was for 7 million, however, we've readjusted that to 2.3 million under suggestion that we split that a third, a third, a third. We're having the same discussion with the regional council, being one of our settlers, and then the other third, we would look to fund ourselves. So we're very conscious of the financial challenges obviously facing the council, but we feel that amount offers good value, value for the return that the stadium does deliver to the city and the region, and the reality is the current operating environment means that major CapEx expenditure is beyond our current means, so we'll, we'll touch on that later. Sustainability, we're continuing to make good progress on waste minimisation. We do provide the council with emissions data, but we've not yet done the work on what is required to achieve carbon neutrality for the stadium, so in our draft SOI, we, we commit to actually doing that work this year, and then looking at what's involved, and then, and then sitting down with council in terms of how we can actually achieve that. Just a couple of other things, there've been several conversations between the stadium and the council in relation to how we can support the council's Tere Maori strategy, as well as council's desire to build stronger working relationships with Maori and, and iwi. I'd just like to acknowledge the fantastic work that Kerap is doing, and we've had some very positive discussions as CCOs in terms of working much more closely and learning from each other what people are doing in this space. Last year with the rebrand of the stadium, we introduced bilingual signage through the venue, and that's been very well received, and then starting with the 660 concert, all of our loudspeaker announcements are also bilingual on the, on the way into the stadium, and that has been well received. But we see that just as a first step, and we look forward to working with council in doing more. Finally, just our relationship with Sky, obviously Sky came on board on the 1st of January last year, neither of us knew what was ahead of us at that stage, but this Sunday, we're working on a number of really interesting fan-focused initiatives, and this Sunday, we, we launched a really cool technology feature where fans will be able to listen to the Sky broadcast on their mobile phones in the venue while sitting in their seat real time, while connected to the stadium wifi via the stadium app. So that's a really cool initiative, that technology has been developed in New Zealand, combination of a company in Wellington and a company in Auckland, and, you know, that will be a very cool initiative. So again, echo the comments of the zoo, really appreciate the support of councillors and officers over the last 12 months. We think we're coming through the other side, and there is light at the end of the tunnel, and we look forward to being part of that with you, thank you.
Thank you Shane. I'm going to start with a question, then I've got a question from councillor Sparrow, just to start on the, on the financial support checking, and you've, you've had to draw down on some of the, the money that was set aside, but there's still some sitting there, are you confident that that's going to be enough to get you through the financial...
Yeah, look, I, I think the amount is about right, last year we posted a $2 million loss, the result will be better this year, but it will be boosted by the final council support and the grant towards the concourse upgrade, so the underlying result will be something similar. So at the moment, we don't see the need for further support, and hopefully with the outlook we have next year, that, you know, we start coming through the other side, okay? Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Sparrow.
Yep, thank you very much for that, very interesting report. The Guns N' Roses concert, I'm just, what kind of numbers would you expect at that? Just out of interest.
The, the last time they were here, we did 32, 33,000, I think it was, so again, we'd like to get somewhere close to, to that number.
Okay, two more questions, I see you've reduced your fire insurance cover to 100 million, previously 200 million, in, in terms of saving costs. Now, would you, is there any evidence of any stadiums around the world being totally destroyed, or if, if it was burnt, for example, would you assume that was not going to be more than half of a total loss, as opposed to...
Yeah, that, that's the assumption we essentially made, that any damage would likely be localised, and we did have some discussions with our fire engineers before we made that decision. We had to make a number of decisions in relation to insurance this year, unfortunately, I mean, insurance for us has been getting increasingly unaffordable. You know, the numbers are quite water, eye-watering, in a normal year, 15% of our revenue is going in insurance, this year it's probably going to be closer to 25, 30%, so it's unsustainable. So we've had to increase our deductible, we've reduced our, our limit as well, but we have kept councils informed at each stage along that process. You know, we're paying three times as much for insurance now than we were pre-Kai Kora. So, yeah, there are some of the decisions we have to make from a business perspective, but we, we keep councils fully informed at each, at each stage.
On that note, having worked in insurance in previous life, have the insurers indicated to you that in the event of perhaps half of a total loss, they would only pay out half of the portion that is actually destroyed, if you're only insuring it for half of its real value?
We, we, we can claim up to that limit that we currently have, so it's, it's not, it doesn't split 50/50, so if in the event, if in the event of total destruction, you know, we, we can claim up to that limit, if there is total damage close to the limit that we currently have, we can still claim up to that, we can still claim up to that limit.
Okay, and one last question. Obviously it's early days yet, but have the Benny, would you reasonably expect the Phoenix to be back in the stadium again in the, in the next season?
Look, as long as there's a Transatasmun bubble, absolutely, and, and hopefully come, say in November, when next season starts, or when it's scheduled to start, that, you know, we'll be in a, we'll be in a much better position. It's all going to depend on, on vaccine rollout, I suppose, so that the risk is going to be probably less so in New Zealand, it's just a different approach in the different states in Australia. It's just a different approach in the different states in Australia in terms of lockdown within those states. So that's created havoc with sport in Australia in general. But hopefully, we'll see the Phoenix here for a game in May, and then fingers crossed, back to normal from November.
Okay, I've got councillor Young, and then Mayor Foster, and then councillor Rush.
Thank you. So just really, this is my ignorance. I mean, I'd never heard of 660 until you had the concert. Putting that to one side, and it might be more of a question for John Allen. Just wondering about the economic ripple effect from a concert like that? Do you have any data on?
Yes, we do. I don't have the financial impact, but for the 660 concert, I recall 40% of the tickets were sold externally. But I know the feedback from the hospitality industry and the hotel sector is that the hotels were full that weekend. And the feedback, I believe, John, has been very positive in relation to that. But generally, those large events, say for a test match, will typically bring 40% of tickets out of region. The Eminem concert was something like 65,000 or 28,000 people from out of region. So generally, for those big shows, we'd be looking at at least 40% out of region. But as I said, Guns N' Roses is somewhere like 65%. It just depends on the nature of the act and whether those are the shows taking place in the country. Guns N' Roses were the only North Island show, hence we're drawing quite a few in from other parts of the North Island. Thank you.
Mayor Foster.
My question was broadly on the same line, which is just, can you just talk a little bit more about the relationship with Wellington NZ in terms of the support for events and just how that's going?
We speak with Wellington NZ on almost a daily basis. So that pipeline of events for next year, I mean, obviously, none of it's confirmed. So we can't discuss the events publicly. But we do look at that pipeline with Wellington NZ. We go through every event, particularly those events that we're competing with other cities for. So we do avail of financial support from Wellington NZ for those larger events. And essentially, that allows us to reduce some of our costs, make us more competitive in terms of bringing events into Wellington. It's very, very competitive out there in terms of securing events. We're looking at securing our own events rather than just simply relying on promoters. We're looking at international sports events at the moment and having discussions overseas that are some exciting opportunities. But certainly with Wellington NZ, it's a hand-in-glove relationship, and we're very much partners in bringing these events to Wellington.
So would it be fair to say that virtually every event that occurs at the stadium has some involvement from Wellington NZ? Or I mean, the big ones that actually fill the stadium itself?
Probably the larger ones, yes, but not every event. And even the ones that there is no financial support for, we work closely with Wellington NZ in terms of marketing those events. We, as a stadium, we take a very commercial approach to securing events for Wellington. We just don't simply say, well, here's our higher fee, here are the costs, that doesn't work anymore. We joint venture on some events, we underwrite some events, we take a risk position on some events because we believe in bringing these events to Wellington. At the end of the day, some will be profitable, others won't be. But at the end of the year, as long as the overall mix spits out a positive result for us, we're comfortable with that. But we are very aggressive in securing events. And as I said, if everything falls our way next year, we could be looking at our busiest year ever next year, fingers crossed.
Sounds great. Good job.
Sorry, councillor Rush, we've run out of time, but I'm sure that you can connect with Shane offline. Thank you very much, Shane, for coming in and for all the work that you're doing. In my household, a lot of excitement at the potential of the Knicks being back in May. They're suffering great withdrawals. And my eight-year-old frequently stays up past bedtime keeping track of the Australian time scores as the games get played, so it's very exciting. Thanks, Shane. All right, next on my list, I've got Wellington NZ. So we've got Tracy John joining from Wellington NZ. Lovely to see you, and you.
Thank you very much for having us. I just want to speak briefly about the approach we're going to take today and also anticipate councillor Funn's question about sustainable development goals. And then hand over to John. You have our quarter two report, it's mostly historical, so we're not intending to talk through it today in any detail. But if you have questions, of course, we will be glad to take them. And we want to focus on what's going on now and also what's coming up ahead of us. And we're going to talk about it in the context of our new strategy. So thinking about place making and storytelling, thinking about jobs and skills, and also collaboration and investment, which are the main areas that we focus on for the city and the region. The vision for the Wellington Regional Economic Development Agency, Wellington NZ, is that the Wellington regional economy is thriving and more people are participating in the benefits. And that speaks directly to the UN Sustainable Development Goal number eight, which is about decent work and economic growth. So there are others that we contribute to, but we centre ourselves on. And on that note, I hand it to John.
We also reduce inequality, and I think we contribute to industry innovation as well. So there are a range of those SDGs that I would say this organisation, along with CCO colleagues, contribute to. I suppose the starting point for me in this conversation is the bubble, because I think it does make a very significant difference for the trajectory for the city and for the region over the next period. And the figures that I just want councillors to have in your minds are 250,000, which in pre-COVID times is the number of Australians that visited us, 1,560,000, which is the number of those Australians that came directly to us through the Wellington International Airport, and 258 million, which is the amount of money that those Australians contributed to our economy. So as you can see, with that sort of, I don't know what's happening with this microphone nonetheless, with that sort of contribution, some of the things that when you went through our scorecard, you were thinking, my gosh, that looks palish amber or even palish red, when you saw we were anticipating heroically two visitors from Australia or four visitors from Australia. And I thought it was magnificent that we were able to label those green because the target had been zero. We desperately overachieved. But I mean, the good news now is when you ask me the questions about that, I'll be able to give you the numbers I've just given you. And so the reality is that it's important that we seize the opportunity that is presented. And obviously, in part, that is about events that can attract people across the Tasman. And we've got this extraordinary Surreal Astate exhibition that's going to be opening in June, which I think has the capacity to do that. We've got Wau reinvigorated back in the city, and we know that has the capacity to do that. So I think that's going to be a significant opportunity alongside the various events that Shaun and his team are able to provide. In part, it's about us welcoming citizens from Australia and being coordinated in the sincerity of our welcome. And in part, it's about the way we tell the stories of this place. And I just want to focus there briefly to talk about what we are doing to ensure that the Australian market knows about this city and this region and is coming to visit us. So first up, on the first flight that comes in from Australia to here, which I can't say that necessarily, but it'd be one of the very first, we've got about 10 journalists, Australian journalists on board. They are here to get excited about this place and this region, and then more importantly, to go back and infect all, actually, that's wrong with them, in the current environment, but you know what I mean. Take that message back into their New South Wales community in particular, and make sure that they all start getting on planes and coming across here for a break. So that's the first thing. The second thing we're doing, we've got about $200,000, which we're committing to an online campaign. It will leverage off the work that Tourism New Zealand is doing. They've got millions and millions of dollars that they're investing into the Australian market. And it will be telling the stories of this place in a way which we believe will take, bring Australians across. We do expect that the first visitors will be largely in the visiting friends and family category and maybe business categories. And so we then have a spring burst, and that's in spring, when we will be having another go with another major campaign to bring people across at that time. So there's a lot of activity to encourage people across the ditch and take advantage of this opportunity. The second thing I'd want to say, just staying with the sort of positive momentum, is that the city economy and the regional economy continues to fire well. And while it is true that there are sectors, and you'll understand those sectors, the hospitality sector, the hotel sector, and some of the administrative tasks in non-government areas, which have suffered declines in employment. We've seen such strong growth in government employment and construction and in technology that overall, the region has performed incredibly strongly and continues to perform incredibly strongly. Now, that's going to require continuing support. We've got Creative HQ as part of our bag of tricks that we can apply into that area to help with innovation, to help organisations position themselves for success. And there's lots that we're doing to take advantage of the potential of the human capability here, the talent that we have in this place, and to line up our institutions, universities, CRIs, those sorts of things alongside business to make it happen. Third thing, I'm coming to the third thing because I can see my chair is getting edgy. She thought I might not mention relationships. But just to talk very briefly in that space, obviously, with a balance sheet like ours and a P and L like ours, we can't make a lot happen without others. We're doing a lot of work with Manu Fenewa at the moment, working with Nati Toa in particular around opportunities for entrepreneur training for Angatahi, also continuing to talk about the Porirua Adventure Park. We're working with Artiawa on a proposal for the reactivation or the re-enthusiasm of the Tiaro Par, which I believe is an important cultural investment for this region and for the storytelling of this place and its origins. And there's lots and lots of other stuff that we're doing. We're going to tell the business stories of this place in a more powerful way. We've got money allocated for that because they need to be told they are fantastic, what is going on here. It is truly inspirational, and yet, with the best will in the world, nobody knows it. So we're just going to have to blow that open and help people understand the talent we've got here and the extraordinary opportunities that that talent is creating. We've got to think about place making and opportunities to bring people. We've got all kinds of ideas to make more Instagrammable moments. Now, I'm not an Instagram person, but apparently this is what anyone under the age of about, oh, I don't know, younger than me, wants to do when they visit a place. And so we've got a whole programme of work that's going to be in that space. So look, there's heaps going on, it is all very positive. Obviously, there are challenges in our community. But frankly, with the opening of the bubble, with the confidence that we're seeing in our business sector and with the partnerships that are being developed with Manu Fenewa, with central government, and across our CCO community, I think we're incredibly, in an incredibly positive position for the balance of this year.
Thank you, John. All right, I've got four councillors on the list, and not a lot of time. So I'm going to ask everyone to pick their favourite question, one each. And if we happen to have time, I'll come back to you. But I am going to let you lead off councillor Funn, since this is kind of your portfolio area.
My happy place. And John, that is amazing hearing about your enthusiasm for the business stories that we've got in Wellington and that we're going to, one thing about us, we're never very good at blowing our own trumpet. So yeah, it's useful when you've got someone else to blow up for you. Thank you for all your mahi in the report, it is an amazing read and it's incredible where you've got your tendrils. So thank you, thank you for the SDG acknowledgement too. My question really is actually around staff wellbeing. Like I noted, that post-COVID, I'm assuming that there was an issue there with the team. Are you confident that you've got their wellbeing at hand going forward?
It's obviously a challenge, and it was a challenging time, particularly for those in our events space, which obviously ground to a halt. And we've had restructuring in that area in response to the demand environment. So that's been challenging. Do I think we've got that under control? Yes, I do. We've had very active programmes of work around wellness and wellbeing. Those have been quite innovative from just simple things like providing fruit and things in the lunch spaces to more specific support programmes and speakers and things like that around resilience for people as we've moved through. We've got pulse surveys that we're running through the organisation. That's little engagement surveys that we're running through the organisation at the moment. And those are remarkably positive. So in fact, we had all our people together on the stage at the Opera House yesterday for a little hui. The mood is good, the momentum's good, there's a lot of laughter, but they're doing a lot of hard work.
Thank you, John. I'm going to go next, which is in the jobs and skills area, which was a great conversation to see. And there's lots of focus on the really exciting stuff around tech and startups. But the biggest challenge that we're facing at council is around the infrastructure pipeline. And we've got a lot of infrastructure spending we need to do, and we keep hearing about capacity constraints. Can you help?
Well, we can certainly, to the extent that innovation is going to be a driver of solutions to this space and that new thinking and ensuring that new partnerships are formed to resolve some of the challenges, then yes, we can help with that. I mean, I've instanced already the work that's being done by Creative HQ, which is of course a council-owned organisation. It's being done with a large number of businesses across this country and internationally, and a lot in the private sector are looking to it to help them position. So I mean, can we help? We don't have a balance sheet, can we help? We don't have a P and L, so we can't help in that sense. But we've got minds and we've got the capacity to bring minds together. And I think actually, that's probably a lot of the answer, new thinking, different approaches, and Creative HQ is a good vehicle for that.
Yeah, I think it would be great to advance some of those conversations because I think we don't often, when we think about infrastructure, I don't think Wellington NZ necessarily pops into our head. So I think that that's an opportunity there. Next on my list, I have councillor Young.
So I've got one, I'll ask you for a coffee, but this one is, first of all, thank you for Van Gogh Alive, which I thought was fantastic, even though I went to see it in torrential rain the first time it was shown during whatever it was, lockdown. Just wanted to ask you about the Love Local Lampton campaign as a Lampton city councillor. So I'm really not quite sure what that involves, it sort of passed me by. And I'm thinking also the fact that when I walk to and from home to here, that every time I go past, there seems to be another empty shop. And just wondering if you're kind of running any data tracking, that kind of thing, et cetera?
So the Love Local campaign was a response, an immediate response to COVID and the challenges that it posed for local retailers. It was to encourage Wellingtonians to support their local outlets, and it was primarily a marketing campaign. And the marketing campaign was online, it was in physical form, and it revolved around a brand that we developed in about five seconds. Didn't go through any smart communications-type process, a PR process. And that Love Local, that yellow brand that got badged onto shops all around, that became very prominent in our online community, was hugely powerful. And the feedback from retailers across the city about the promptness of that response and about the impact of that response has been very positive as well. At Christmas time, you might recall, we did under the Love Local brand a range of interventions, which include pop-up stores in places that were empty, again, bringing together local artisans, people like the Wellington Chocolate Company, Supreme Coffee, I can't think who else, the Gelato, there was a heap of them in Willis Street. And it was just, it was like a rocket, that thing, it just went off. And so the retailers now want to do more of that. And so, yes, we are working with Chris Wilkinson and his team on what the opportunities for us to do more of that sort of thing are.
The sort of data on how many empty shops there are, et cetera?
That data is collected, the city actually collates that. Shaun Ordain and his team have that and actually have spatial maps of where that is occurring. There are, I mean, there's a lot of conversation, as you'll be well aware, and a lot of ideas in that space. in that space, from wallpapering spaces just to make sure that they're sort of brighter and more, have less of a drag impact on the community, to the sort of pop-up store idea, to using it for art spaces, as you will have seen in some instances, and for other installations of that kind. So things are happening, but as you say, there are some challenges.
Please, I mean, I was totally aware of Love Local, I mean, it just passed me by, but I mean, yeah, I mean, it was very, it was very, a lot of street appeal, and I do spend money in the shops and things, just so you...
All right, councillor O'Neill, I am out of time. Is it all right if we skip you? Maybe morning tea could be your moment. Thank you very much, team. And yeah, I did feel like it was, talking about COVID in a bar chart or COVID in a stat when I was reading last night, that we'd had two people come from Australia. Did feel like that was, that was a bit of a story of our year, so thanks very much for all the work that's going into that. Next, we're welcoming Wellington Museums Trust, Experience Wellington, and we've got Sarah Rushom here, and it's Jane, isn't it? And Jane, who's going to be the, have you started as the new chair or are you about to start?
I started as the new chair on the 1st of January.
Excellent. Lovely to have you on board. Handing it over to you.
I'm Himahna Oteuakiakoto. Call Jane Wrightson Tokoingoa, kua o te tiamana or Experience Wellington. I'm here representing the Experience Wellington Trust with my chief executive, Sarah Rushom. It is my first experience here as chair. I have been four years on the board, so I'm now familiar with the business. And it's a complex and interesting business, spanning five crucial institutions inside Wellington. We're all very proud to serve this organisation and its institutions. Our vision at Experience Wellington is engaged curious communities, and what that means is we're in the hearts and minds business. You all know, we all know, that Wellington is facing extraordinary pressure at the moment, once-in-a-generation infrastructure problems, and none of us envy the tasks ahead of you. There's a couple of things around that. I've been really encouraged with the collaboration I've seen with the other CCOs. I think both COVID and the issues facing the city have provided not just challenges but opportunities for us to work better and more collegially and more strategically. I would also say that despite the infrastructure challenges, we all know that it's experiences that confirm why people love living here and that attract new citizens here. And that is the business that we are in and the opportunities that we offer to Wellington as a whole. A couple of upcoming things, of course, you will have noticed the announcement in the last week or so of the Hilma af Klint exhibition. After many months of planning, we're incredibly grateful for the city coming in behind this. I put this on both my Facebook and LinkedIn feeds, LinkedIn just as a kind of thing. And I've never had so much engagement in my life on this post, largely because people start off by saying, "Hilma who?", and within about three minutes they go, "Oh my God!". So we're all very excited about this and grateful for people to get, for the city getting in behind it. The other great opportunity and issue for us at the moment is of course the Wellington Museum, the opportunity to remediate it and the opportunity to revitalise it. Sarah will run through the SOI and we'll look forward for you now. The key operational messages from us, obviously, is that the data you have at the moment is quarter till and it's pretty historic now. But we have absolutely noticed the absence of tourism in our business. We are very grateful for the council's support. And in short, we think we should be getting close to break even within about a year or so. Again, hopefully with your support. So over to Sarah. No deu 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 deu.
Namu nuu, Jane. Yep. So quarter two, we're going to take as red, just I think the bottom line here is that, you know, fingers in the wind when we made these predictions. We've tracked so much better than we thought we would, and that trend is continuing. Quarter two and quarter three, what we bring to the city is that vibrance, that kind of connection of communities, bringing people together on scales large and small, intimate and macro. And navigating that while the COVID levels change is, has been really challenging for the team. But just in Q2, things like lunchtime talks, Women in Significance, touring a show nationally for the National Theatre for Children, which was produced in Wellington just after lockdown, providing work for that creative community here across the month of November, Pride, doing Pride film screens up at Space Place, bringing a show to City Gallery retrospect of Zac Langdon Pole, which was also developed during lockdown. These are things which, again, looking at quarter three, are just bringing people together and helping people to connect and recover and learn that they can come back into the city to test the waters before they might come in for the stadium gig, they might come in, but bringing people in and being part of that staged recovery that we're all engaged in. Quarter three, again, great shows from National Theatre for Children, music, gigs on a small scale, and things like Children's Day just a few weeks ago, where 3,000 people came in to celebrate Under the Sails with families, with whanau, with a whole heap of local performers all coming together to celebrate what makes this city tick. From Experience Wellington perspective and from my point of view as a relatively new chief executive, what we've been working on is just repositioning our strategy. As Jane said, our vision is engage curious communities, but our purpose is really what makes us tick. And that is those remarkable experiences that generate vitality and vibrance and strengthen the city we love, and that is the bottom line for us. And so our four strategic poe are arranged around that, enriching lives, which if you think about Ahutini and that draft strategy, our city as a stage, that connection, that vibrance, stages large and small, different voices, different perspectives, and bringing communities together is our bread and butter. Embracing to almarri, this is the most, this is the newest poe to us, this is part of our journey, and we've been delighted to be working with Kaerapar and with our CCO colleagues to really inculcate this into our organisation and to recognise how early we are on this journey, but how as an arts and cultural organisation, this is absolutely essential for our work. And one of the things we're looking forward to is Tareo being the first thing that anyone encounters when they encounter Experience Wellington. Mahi Tāhi, so Experience Wellington, working together as a team, taking out some of the silos, allowing us to plan better, to work better together, and to achieve more for the city by putting our resources wholeheartedly behind that purpose. And Experience Wellington flourishes, again, as Jane said, coming back to that break-even position for 2223, but also recognising atakura and making sure that there is a sustainable and financial rationale behind every decision that all of my staff make. So that is borne out in the statement of intent. It echoes those council strategies from the economic development to the children and young people at Ahutini. We're also working really closely on the Tanako framework as well. We've been able to contribute to that and we're really looking forward to consultation in the next phase because with Tomatapehi and the opportunity for capital E in there, and City Gallery, and the recognition of that space as an arts and culture hub for Wellington, we think Experience Wellington has a massive part to play in that conversation. We're also participating in the nighttime economy because we want people to see the museums and galleries as something which lead the way in terms of experiences, not just nine to five, but also beyond that, to really kind of explore and challenge what people's concepts are for our cultural institutions in the city. So from a statement of intent perspective, we are gradually in this draft, kind of clawing our way back to our normal business position. We will require financial support over the next year, but in terms of realising our strategy, we'll be looking closely at how we implement that strategy to set ourselves up for success and that break-even position a year hence. So our future focus, coming back to councillor Foon's question, managing our staff, visitors and programmers in the face of COVID-19, constantly working between the levels and being as flexible as we possibly can, but not closing our doors, being sure that we are connecting communities even in the face of that, implementing our strategy, making that real and inculcating that throughout our organisation and bringing those philosophies to life, and operating within those financial constraints and exploring the different options for the future that we have there. But coming back to that core of our purpose and strengthening the city we love. Jane mentioned Hilma front and centre. This is an extraordinary exhibition, an opportunity for the city. We are delighted to be working alongside Wellington NZ on that, as well as our colleagues at City Council and the City Gallery Foundation. This is a show that sold out at the Guggenheim. It has so much resonance in terms of spirituality, in terms of unsung women, and just sheer gobsmacking heft of Instagrammable moments. And just the story that's in there, and the fact that this is the only place that'll be coming in New Zealand is huge for us. The opportunities we're exploring, Tomatapehi as a co-located space for capital E, and really bringing that children and young people's strategy to the fore and enriching that opportunity and becoming something absolutely crucial and unique for the city back to life, we're excited to be part of that conversation. Jane talked about the strengthening of Wellington Museum and working with council, and we're very grateful for the dollop of money that's sitting in the draft LTP to take us further on the strengthening journey that we've been going on together for the last 10 years. And so we're looking forward to that potentially starting in early 2023. And then the last image there is a shot from one of the first renders we've seen from the Navigators project, which is a 280/50 funded project, which is celebrating Matarang Amari in a Pacific-specific planetarium show that talks all about navigation to this place. And it will screen not just at Space Place, Carter Observatory, but we are hoping to take that to Planetarium across New Zealand, but also to sell that product around that world. And that's been made with our colleagues at Park Road Post, with the creative tech community here in Wellington, and with the film, music, acting ecosystems that we also work so hard to support in terms of providing pathways and helping the economy to thrive in our own way as well. So kirotato and any questions? Oh, this is a beautiful image from Children's Day, I just wanted to share with you.
Lovely. Thank you, Sarah. And it's great to see that the strategic work that's coming together and how that's really tying in with some of the council direction. It's really exciting to see that develop. My first question is around the financial in the SOI. So the draft SOI you've brought us has a request for about $900,000 worth of additional council funding, which is, which was even more than what you've needed this year to get you through. So I was wondering if you could talk us through kind of why the organisation needs that much, what much funding and what, I guess, some of your options are to, you know, to look at break even rather than break even 2223, to be looking at break even 2122, which is...
Yeah. So this year, we're projecting a 1.2 million-plus deficit. We think we're going to be able to bring that in closer to 900,000 this year. We, I think the prediction, so in our draft SOI, we signaled a 700-ish K deficit in the next financial year. We, taking on the risk of Hilma in an unpredictable operating climate, means that we have put some additional risk for Hilma into the next financial year. We will do everything in our power to mitigate that. And the way that we're going to be implementing our strategy means that we are going to be moving towards ways of operating that will set us up for success in terms of our commercial, the way we operate commercially, and the way that we work together better and plan together better across the organisation. So we are taking those internal actions to ensure that that is a worst-case scenario, if you will. In terms of the achieving a break-even next year, for us, that would require some really radical and different approaches to our business. So for me, the biggest part of my budget is staff, and so we would have to look very hard at that aspect of our budget and look at how we operate. So, you know, you move from all of the vibrant programmes that you see to something which is a far reduced level of service. You could look at mothballing institutions, potentially. You could look at putting admission charges on our institutions as well. Admission charges for our institutions, you know, there are arguments for and against that, you know, Space Place, which always traditionally had an admission charge, works quite nicely, but in a town where you have Tepapa as a free institution, it is really, it would be really hard to position the gallery and the museums and capital E in that way. So you have a whole range of options which we could consider, but all of them would, I think, affect our levels of service and the level of vibrancy that we bring to the city.
Thank you. I've got councillor Young.
Thank you. So I've got a whole lot of questions, but I'll keep most of them for a little bit later so I won't tire everyone's time up. So I'm just looking at page 80, and first of all, there's just a line that is incomprehensible to me, which is "Institution is 20 Museum, 22 Nans Street, 21 Kebuka". Is that just a glitch? Or is that a secret code?
Ah. Sorry, let me refer to the page.
So it's under the statement of financial performance? And it's before you get into the numbers?
Page 80.
Page 80. Shall I show you on my little magic screen?
I have page 31, my, I'm looking at the SOI, rather than the papers. Oh, there we go. Oh, that's just institutional coding. That's zero. That's how we code things in zero. So that's how we, how we plan our projects, assigned projects in zero.
That's changed my life, thank you. So then the other thing is, under operating expenses, professional fees in the quarter, first line, it seems to be, we know you've got, the budget is 125, and then the actual is 5,621.
Sorry.
Shall I come round?
Yeah. Okay.
I've read it.
Can we paint your face?
No. Oh, it's here. All right. It's not working very well, is it?
Oh, yeah.
You got it?
Yeah, yeah. So professional fees here. Those two.
So professional fees is here, and then go along the budget is 125 and the actual is 5,621.
So that depends on things like the phasing of shows for National Theatre for Children. And so shows don't happen in a straight line across the year, they happen in lumps.
So, so, you know, I'm not an accountant, but wouldn't you want to factor that into the way you do the budgeting as well?
No, I'd want to, well, that's, but things were delayed because of COVID.
Okay.
So when the budget was set was kind of before...
Okay. We're predicting that expenditure by the end of the year.
Yeah, that expenditure will happen, but it's not.
Right. Okay, thank you. That's fine.
Councillor O'Neill, very quickly.
Thank you. I'll keep it really brief. We know that employment across Wellington region has stayed relatively stable for Pakia people, but Maori and Pacifica have faced the greatest job losses and a lot of Maori and Pacifica people are represented in the creative sector. You briefly mentioned the Navigators, but are there any sort of parts of the work programme that we can point to and talk about, employing or aiming to get more Maori and Pacifica people up and front and centre in Wellington?
Within Experience Wellington, we have a Maori employment strategy, which we've recently adopted, and that's part of our embracing to almarri poe. We also work very consciously with the creative sector, not just things like the Navigators, but our shows for National Theatre for Children. We strive to ensure there is representative diversity within those, not just the acting teams, but the teams that wrap around those, so that includes all the creatives, et cetera, that wrap around us. So we do take a very conscious diversity lens to recruiting and to working with the creative communities that surround us, and not just within that 280/50 grant, but the other projects that we do. We bring an access and inclusion lens to almost every project that we undertake.
I can't underestimate the importance of the embracing to almarri poe. It's a major strategic shift for this organisation.
Kiara, thank you. All right, we are running a little bit late, but just before we break from morning tea, just while all of the CCO, we've got some CCOs who are arriving for after morning tea and the ones who are still here, so Claire just wanted to have a quick word while everybody's here, and then we'll quickly have a break from morning tea.
Perfect, perfect timing, Paul. Kirotato, I just want to acknowledge and thank the chief executives and the chairs who are here today. The chief executives and I and Warwick have been spending a fair amount of time together over the last six months, thinking about how we work as effectively as we can as a team, as a council whanau. And one of the things we did a couple of weeks ago was spend some time with Kaerapar, talking, so picking up your poe, talking about our work together to work effectively in partnership with Maori. So what we are proposing to do is have a workshop with councillors ahead of the next CCO subcommittee meeting to talk about that with you and talk about what CCOs are doing, but also what CCOs are doing together and with council and with our community. So I just... So I just wanted to let you know that we are progressing a new way of working, which is in a much more integrated way, not that that didn't exist before, but being very purposeful about that. And I just want to thank the time that, I guess, my peers, my colleagues, my CCO chief executive colleagues have put to progressing that. So thank you.
Thank you, Claire. All right, morning tea is an important time because I think it's a great time for us all to actually have a chat. So I'm loathe to cut into it, but I will, but I also am conscious that if we run long, I'm cutting into councillors' lunch breaks because we have a one o'clock. So I'm going to ask everyone to come back at five minutes past 11:00. So we still have a decent amount of chit chat time. Thank you, everyone.
I hope you've all enjoyed morning tea and got to have some good conversations. First on my list after morning tea is Wellington Cable Car. Welcome Caesar and Andy, lovely to see you. Oh, it was funny last night, I was reading your report and there's something in there about the steel cars from 1979. So I'm reading this report, my husband's sitting across the room and I say, "Oh, the cars are from the same age, the same year I was born." And then the next line of the report says, "They're in very good condition, but they're starting to show signs of their age." And I thought, "Yeah, fair." So lovely to see you, we're very excited to hear about how it's going. Over to you.
For me to start with, look, it's been a year of massive challenge and massive opportunity really for the cable car. And that's reflected both in the Cable Car's quarter two report and in the SOI. Obviously, from a challenged perspective, massive reliance on international tourism and that reliance has increased over recent years. And then when you look at it from an opportunity perspective, it's been a real opportunity over the last 11 months, I suppose. And since Caesar's been on board as CEO and with a revamped board, which includes myself as chair, and both with Danny McCombe and David Perks, gives us a well-formed board to work with Caesar around some of the initiatives that have been undertaken over the last year to sort of leave every, leave no stone unturned in terms of seeking opportunity to challenge ourselves about how we can ensure the sustainability of the cable car icon through this period into the future. So with that, I'll pass over to Caesar to run through the detail.
Thanks Andy. Kia ora koutou na Australia au ko aroha cable car tokamahi, ko pioto tokafanao, ko Caesar tokainua, norairā tēnā koutou, tēnā koutou, tēnā koutou kataa. That was a new one, so looking for feedback. Look, I'm really excited to be here representing the Cable Car Fun Hour and talk to you about our journey on the last 12 months, especially quarter two, and also looking forward to the next few years. One of the first pieces of work that we delivered, which has been really instrumental in us re-finding our way in the world, was to develop our shared purpose. Andy mentioned we've got a new board, I came on less than a year ago and embracing this journey through all of our staff. We came down to, our purpose here at the Cable Car is to host uniquely Wellington experiences that locals are proud of and visitors remember and share. And that really helps us set the tone for our why. I won't go through all of our values, but I just do want to point out that we consider ourselves as kaiaitiaki's of this Wellington Tonga. And everything that we do, everything that we work for is to ensure that our grandchildren can also ride the cable car and share on those stories as we see grandparents taking their grandchildren on the cable car right now. So it's really imperative that we continue to invest in our infrastructure. Some of it, which is 120 years old and Jenny, showing more ages of their wear and tear than some of our car infrastructure. And to make sure that they maintain to engineering levels. So just reflecting back on 2020, 21, there's been a huge amount of work done and I'm going to move through this pretty quickly. But we started to reflect on our operational, ensuring that we were operating prudently and ensuring that we were adapting to the times. We undertook a full review of our structure and we refocused our attention on the user experience, so hence the uniquely Wellington experiences, and focusing on staff development and training. Last year, we undertook our most comprehensive body of repairs and maintenance the cable car has done in recent past. So we often talk about bogies and I share this picture with you because that is a bogie. There are two in each car and it is, excuse me, it is what connects the cars to the track. Incredibly complex bits of engineering and we often have to go back to 1977 drawings, which are in German, to be able to manufacture any replacement parts. But our approach now to maintenance with an engineering lens to it means that we are comfortable that these bogies will last well beyond their original intended lifespan, which is great news for us. We moved through the next part, which is with a very small team of two in our maintenance team, we have an incredibly broad range of assets, bridges, tunnels, tracks, cars and property as well. So it's been a really complex task to navigate how we manage and how we ensure that our assets are in good operational order. I do want to acknowledge and thank the team at the City Council for their ongoing assistance and help because we can't be masters of all trades, but with their support, we continue to develop very robust plans to ensure that our assets are operational. We reflected on our market, you know, and it helped us to understand and frame what travel patterns and preferences and most importantly, how to engage with the different market segments. It also allowed us to understand how they were performing. So reflecting on last year, it's not a pretty picture. We're going to be down on our forecast and mind you, this is at the time of writing, we expect to be 63% down on passenger numbers from last year. Our casual segment, which includes predominantly international tourists, includes our cruise ship visitors, includes visitors to the city, has been the worst hit. Our commuters have also taken a bit of, taken a significant hit. And this is largely due to working from home situations, closed universities, changing work patterns. This has always had an effect on cable car patronage. A really good story, the fact that families are only down 43% is a really feel-good story because of the extended marketing efforts to target families to come and spend time in the cable car. And as I've spoken to you all before, these collaborative approaches to making sure that they come to the cable car and visit Zelandia or visit Space Place. So, and our Super Gold members are still there but have taken a slide here. What's really exciting is the new products that have been developed. You see here a group of young children that are now coming and taking a guided tour on the cable car. Instead of having a one-hour trip to the Cable Car Museum or Space Place, it's now a half-day experience where they see the physics, the engineering, the science behind how things work and they can go into the classroom and understand the theory. So you see that they come here, they have a guided trip, they understand the engineering behind the passing loop and then they move on to Cable Car Museum and through their program, understand the theory behind it. We've developed a host of new partnerships. What if Wellington was a theatre? We hosted 12 performances, had huge feedback, it was incredible. And now there's talks in the works to see how we can, how we can do more. We hosted 660 on the way and I was at their concert and the cable car was featured there. And that is all part of, you know, letting Wellingtonians know that this is in their backyard. We've been working with Wellington City Mission to see how we can incorporate a journey on the cable car for the people who live in the city and then cruise down to the gardens. So there's a host of new partnerships being developed. And finally, we've had a massive hit in revenue and we're exploring how we can create new revenue streams. So through Easter, if you're up there, we've got a little ice cream cart, we're looking at a future potential, excuse me, coffee outlet, so generating some rental revenue out of that as well. So we had some very happy children that could eat ice cream on top of their chocolate. So as Andy said, we've left no stone unturned. Just looking through to the future, it is really around adaptability. We will have to undergo a pricing review, continue to develop and grow these new products and explore any other new revenue streams. We were entering COVID-19 with some, with some good cash reserves, which are all earmarked towards asset replacement, the rolling stock and continue to develop the, continue to work on the seismic resilience of tunnels, tracks and the other assets. So what you can see here, the bars represent passengers where we were a couple of years ago, almost nudging 1.2 million visitors at the cable car per year and how that's come down to this year where we're expecting just over 600,000, a bigger part than just under 600,000. And how we hope that passenger numbers will recover over the next three to four years. The solid line is the cash position at the end of the year. And you see that we have been utilizing the cash reserves to ensure that we can continue to operate. We have made some, excuse me, we've made some changes to our operation and it's through sheer work of the team that we've been able to pull that before it went through the bottom line there. We do have some big works coming up. We have discussed in the past, it's clearly in the SOI, we need to make sure that the tunnels, we need to make sure that all our assets, our assets are in good working order to continue to provide this service. So what we have done is we have, excuse me, $4.5 million that is currently in the LTP that will help us over the next six years and $2.4 million with NZTA Waka Katahi funding that will also continue to form part of that CapEx renewal fund. These all initiatives are supported by our board and it really illustrates the amount of work that we have gone through to turn every stone, to try to find every opportunity to make sure that this Wellington Tonga is here for tomorrow's generation. The final key assumption, excuse me, that I just wanted to share with you is this SOI is really positioned differently, that it is maintenance-focused, it is ensuring that we can continue to operate in what continues to be a really challenging environment. Kia ora and thank you.
Thank you Caesar, it was, you know, you've clearly brought in the SOI some, some pretty unpalatable options about, about ways that we could come back to break even, but that's really appreciated by the committee to kind of see what, what would be required. I'm going to start, I'm probably not going to get the time for a couple of questions, councillor Rush, you were first, so just one question please.
Thanks Caesar. Look, it's been very, very difficult, I think, out of all the CCOs, you have probably been the most affected and I just want to congratulate you and your team for what you've done. I have got some questions and I'm going to declare it's probably my own ignorance, so I'm going to follow up later with Caesar if that's okay. I've just, the numbers don't seem to quite, quite add up and I'm guessing it's probably because I'm not understanding, so I'll leave it for now.
Thank you. I guess my one question, there was something in the report about that Talavira and Salamanca stations may need some improvements to meet safety standards, could you tell us a bit about that?
Absolutely. Look, our three intermittent stations met code of compliance when they were built. And as we look at, especially from accessibility point of view, especially from a safety point of view, in the next few years, they're all going to need some upgrades to make sure that they meet current codes of compliance.
Thank you. Councillor Sparrow.
Yes, thank you for that, very, very interesting. Just a couple of questions, the first one's very quick. When would you like to know about your request for Waka Katahi funding? Yeah, because you are waiting to hear back on that one, I believe.
I think the consultation, sorry, consultation has closed, we are presenting next week. And then the process, I'm not sure exactly when there'll be decisions made.
But it will be before we sign off our LTP.
Yeah, look, again, just interested in the breakdown of all the various users of the cable car. How do you actually monitor that? Because you don't specifically ask at the time, are you out of town or whatever, do you? Or are you, I guess you can figure out who the secret gold carded ones are, but other than that, how do you monitor that?
No, really good question. Initially, it's monitored by the ticket type. So we make some assumptions that if you're in a snapper or you're in a multi-trip, you're a local commuting. We have started to, and we gather some data on where people are from, when they buy a casual ticket, so a return or a one-way. So we have some pretty good breakdowns on where people are coming from, when they're buying that. The school groups are obviously fairly isolated and obviously Super Gold, as you mentioned, is quite unique.
Very quickly, councillor O'Neill.
You noted in your report a really significant premium increase to your insurance going up by 34% in a single year. Could you expand a little bit on that and how the pressures have been dealt with through the organisation?
Look, insurance is probably one of our most significant costs, it did go up significantly last year. It's been signaled that we'll see another increase in the coming year, we've just started doing our renewal. All of the efficiencies gained, all of the cost-saving measures that we've enacted merely allows us to almost tread water and absorb that increase from, from the insurance. We have, we continue to work with them to make sure that they know all of the work that's being done, ensuring the assets as well protected as possible and that's really paying some dividends, minimizing the increases that we're seeing.
I suppose the only other point to make on there is that we got a bit of a double whammy last year because there was the impact of increases in premium plus an asset revaluation. So the assets hadn't been revalued for three years and there was quite a big uptake in asset valuation as well. So it was probably about half and half in terms of that increase. So the increase this year should be slightly less, but there's still going to be a hit to that. And we've, as a board, we've taken a view that it's pretty important that we continue to hold that insurance from an earthquake risk perspective because it probably won't be at the top of the list to retain if we do get a big event.
Thank you, thanks very much Caesar and Andy. I agree with councillor Rush that I think, you know, you've definitely had the hardest row out of all the CCOs and we really do appreciate the amount of work that's gone in from you and the team. And I know that you've, that you have turned over every stone and you've been incredibly creative in terms of some of the new activities and hosting and it's, it's really exciting to see you turning a challenge into an opportunity, you know, because you really have taken this as an opportunity to look at what the strategy is of the cable car as well. So very grateful and we will continue our conversations, this is not the end of the road on the SOI, this is the beginning. So, you know, we'll, we'll be in touch to keep having those conversations as we go forward. Thank you. All right, welcome Zelandia, we've got Paul and Philip here from Zelandia to update us on them. I just wanted to let you know, I've been to the Rasha Cafe, you noted in the, that the new glazing has gone on, it is lovely. It's really nice. So councillors, if you haven't been up since the, since the new update, it's really a huge improvement on the space, I think it's going to be great, so. I'll hand it over to you.
Thanks Jenny, I just wanted-
I just want to cover a couple of headline items and then Paul go into a bit more detail. But I did want to start with the Rata Cafe. The work that's been done there with the assistance of council has been absolutely fantastic, and we will be able to monetize the benefit of that as we get into the cooler months, because the cafe will be warm and dry for people will be able to slide those double glazing glass across, and we'll be able to have the full cafe available through the winter months. So it'll be a great benefit, and we'll be able to monetize that benefit. So thank you again to council for that. Paul will say a little bit more about the Lower Lake restoration. The level is down around about halfway now, and it's got a bit further to go, but Paul will say something about that. I wanted to just mention the new accommodation, Tanglewood House, which is where the house is going to be, and part of the car park's going to be replaced. We've got to a point now where we're reasonably confident, although we haven't got all the figures together, we're reasonably confident that we're going to be able to hit our original budgeting costs despite a number of cost increases in the construction industry generally, and we've been able to find ways to mitigate those. And we think we'll probably get that job done for the originally targeted 4,000 a square metre, which is, if we can get that, it'll be very good. If we go a little bit over, we have enough spare reserve to cover that. Working capital continues to be sound, and our 2021 result for the year is forecast to be a surplus both at the operating line and the bottom line as well, with a bit of luck. The 2022 budget, we are currently considering that and looking ahead to how we might be able to produce a good result for 2022. The last thing I just want to quickly mention is that we have a number of non-financial objectives, which you're all aware of, and we're looking at developing measures for our sustainable development goals and aligning them with global standards, so that we are not just making up measures that suit ourselves, but we're aligning ourselves with the global standards. And the last thing I want to say too is that we had a very successful AGM last year, and I want to acknowledge mayor Foster's contribution in speaking to the AGM. We had 174 people, I think it was there, so we completely filled the partiki room. And with approaching, I think it is, it might be over 18,000 members now, we have to consider what we do for our AGMs in future, if we can, if we have more people than we can fit into the room. So, but I might just mention one small thing. After the AGM, one of, a number of people said it was a very well-run AGM. We had, as it says in the report, Grant Foster, Grant Robertson spoke as well on a subject matter that we had around future sustainability and our plans for that. And one of our senior members, older people, came up, who was attending the AGM, and said that she was so impressed with the whole thing, she wanted to leave a bequest to Zelandia of a substantial amount. And so, you know, that was just a very nice response to an AGM, which you generally think is a boring, you know, approve the accounts sort of thing. But we've added value by getting the mayor and the minister to speak, and so it was very successful. Now, Paul will speak a bit more to some of the detail of what I've mentioned. Thank you.
Kia ora kato. Thanks, Phil, and thank you to all of you. Look, I will take the quarter two report and also, of course, the SOI as read. But I thought I'd just give you some updates, because of course, the quarter two report only goes to the end of December. So let me give you a few updates and talk about one or two of the major projects before I get on a quick look ahead to next year. We're tracking well against targets to the end of March. Visitor numbers remain two or better than target over the whole year to date. But what we are noticing is that the way people are spending is very, very different to a market that had 60,000 additional international visitors in it prior to lockdown last year. And what we're noticing particularly is that this is hitting tours and retail. So people taking up tours has not hit target, and our retail also as a consequence is slightly less than we'd anticipated. This is being made up in other areas, so overall, we're in good shape financially. But actually, when you drill down and look at the variations at line level, you can actually see that the market is a very different market to the one that we had pre-COVID. And one of the other indicators of that is the length of the high season. Essentially, it was about four weeks, whereas previously, it would have run from October through to April. The last cruise ship was around about the 22nd of April, had it have docked, and they start in October. So you can see that we've gone from a summer season, a high season of six or seven months, through to one that really lasted just January. And we've been quite surprised at how quickly that high season dropped off. Now, you know, I guess it's not difficult to understand, given that schools go back in early February and all the rest of it. But it is, it is worth noting that actually, the market we are now in is a very different one to the one we were experiencing previously. And this is no different to the market that our friends in the cable car, at the zoo, at Experience Wellington are all experiencing. So, but as I say, overall, we're tracking well to or slightly better than all the indicators in the current business plan, albeit one or two, there are one or two ups and downs, there are swings and roundabouts. In terms of major projects, I've just flicked around a couple of pictures that were taken only a day or so ago of the Lower Lake at Zelandia, and you can see that the water level is now down by about two metres. I thought I'd just give you a quick update on this project. It is probably one of the most major freshwater projects of its type in New Zealand, and certainly here, partly because the body of water is so extensive. It is a very deep lake, and therefore, the volume of water is very high. It has a thermocline in it, which means that you don't get mixing of the water layers, which means that you have all sorts of technical issues with removing introduced species of fish out of it. So technically, it's an extremely complex project, and it will be another, I think, model for how to do this stuff. So where we're at is that the stream system between the two lakes, between the upper dam and the lower lake, has now been completely cleared. We did remove a vast number of banded kokapu and tuna out of that system before it was treated. And in fact, the DOC folks who are working on the project with us commented that they've never seen a project where so much care has been taken to remove native species out of the system prior to treatment. The lower lake level is now being reduced, as you can see. It's around about, getting on for about two metres down at the moment. We are going to go down to around about five metres down. So we've got the same again to go. If you get a chance, do come up and have a look, because it'll be probably the only time we will ever get a chance to see the rusting buses and coaches and bicycles. No, I'm only joking. I really am only joking. I realize this is probably being recorded. I really, really am only joking. It is actually a very unique project inasmuch as we're very, very unlikely to reduce the level of this lake again. And just come and have a look at what it looks like. It's fascinating, and it's got some fascinating history, of course, because there are old gold mines at the bottom of that valley. So it's on track now for the final work of treatment to be done in May, and then thereafter, we will allow natural rainfall and the catchment itself to refill the lake. Other projects, Tanglewood House, Phil has already mentioned, is progressing and progressing well, and we are on track and being extremely mindful regarding keeping it on track to budget, as well as to the aesthetics and utility of the building itself. The other project that's worth mentioning is just the work that we've been doing around Matauranga and Teo Maori. And I mentioned this to a meeting that we had a couple of, a week or so ago, that Claire convened, that we've been doing quite a lot of work in Zelandia on trying to integrate not only Maori language and Maori knowledge, but worldviews as well into what we do in an integrated way. And just a week or so ago, we launched a whole new internally developed program that includes a nine, 10-point program of Teo language instruction for staff. And that's now being trialed on the first tranche of staff going through it. So some exciting stuff going there, and that's all new from the previous, since the last quarter two report. Last but not least, let me just say a few words about the SOI in 2122. It is going to continue to be challenging. From budget terms, you know, difficult decisions, just like everybody else, we're no different to anybody else in that respect, will have to be made. We are maintaining all our programs, and we're working very hard to maintain all our programs. But of course, in the coming financial year, we're not anticipating the buffers that we've had this year in terms of central government funding that has made a big difference. That's both through the STAP funding, the Strategic Tourism Assets Protection Program funding, and also the Wildlife Institutions funding from DOC, which has been fabulous and has been a great help this year. However, all up, we will be, we will remain in good shape. We've got a strong balance sheet, and we're able to use that, excuse me, we're able to use that to manage things over the coming 12 months. We, of course, with the opening up of borders with Australia now, that could and should make a very helpful difference to us, given that we do have, have in the past had quite a sizable tourism base from Australia. Yet to be seen, we're still learning about how these new markets work, because they're not the same as they were. But it's, all of that will be upside. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. I've got questions from councillor O'Neill and councillor Rush.
Excellent. Thank you, Paul and Philip. Congratulations on a really successful breeding season over the summer as well. It was very exciting. I had a question, you mentioned in the report, complying with the council's accessible action plan, and I know that there's been a lot of work for audio and visual support. Have we any ambitions to make more trails within the Zelandia Eco Sanctuary more accessible for people with mobility issues, or what other work is being done in that space?
Yeah, thanks, Terry. That's very helpful. Yes, we are constantly doing work on the trails, and we're very mindful, actually, that during the post-lockdown phase, where we had a lot of people come through in what was relatively bad weather, because it was the middle of winter, quite a lot of wear and tear was seen on our trails. So even trails that would normally be quite accessible, and quite accessible by, for example, the mobility scooters that we've got in the sanctuary, were no longer accessible. So A, we're doing, we're bringing those back up to speed and back up to grade. In terms of extending the reach of accessible tracks and trails, that will be a much longer term project. We're always looking at tracks and trails, but that will be a longer term project. But we have a commitment to continue to work for greater accessibility for all sorts of people. We've done work, as you may know, in the past on people with both visual and hearing challenges, and we will continue to look at ways of making things more accessible.
councillor Rush, very quickly, because we are out of time.
I hope it's another easy one, because I'm just not that literate. This is a Q2 report to 31 December 2020, but there's a forecast to 30 June 2021, which essentially is, has doubled the revenue from the second quarter. So is that 30 June 2021, is that a full year budget?
Yes, it is. So what we do is we do three quarterly forecasts to year end, which enables us to make adjustments as we go, should we need to, in terms of our operations. So the second quarterly forecast is a really important one, because it's halfway through, and so it is exactly as you've said.
Yeah. And I think we're out of time, so thank you.
Thank you, councillor Rush. Thank you very much. It's, you know, it's interesting to hear about the, what we're learning about the kind of post-COVID market, and how the different customer segments are changing and all of that kind of thing. So thanks very much for sharing that with us, and we look forward to seeing you at Rata Cafe again soon. Thank you very much. All right. And then next, I've got, lucky last, Basin Reserve Trust, welcome, Alan. Lovely to have you here. It was very exciting to see the announcement of the ICC Women's World Cup matches that have been coming to the basin. Very exciting, some good matchups coming to us as well. So I'll hand over to you to talk us through.
Thank you. An update on 2021. We didn't budget for any international cricket this year, and we didn't budget for any concerts. So we've benefited because international cricket has been played, as you're aware, including the very successful one day against Bangladesh on the 26th of March. And as an aside, I think it was particularly good to see the old stand well utilized by the public. It wasn't the case before Christmas, because New Zealand cricket in its wisdom decided to add a charge. So we dealt with that, and I think had good patronage for the match on the 26th of March. So yes, we got some international cricket, which helped, and we're also able to run a concert, which was held on the, last Saturday, on the 3rd. The other benefit that we got was that our biggest cost is the payment that we make to the stadium for the turf maintenance and management, and those costs have been less than budgeted, because obviously, they benefited from the wage subsidy. So we're seeing some reduced costs. So budgeted for basically a break even, and now we're forecasting a modest surplus. So it's a bit of an update on quarter two, sorry, on 2021. In terms of the draft SOI, a couple of things to highlight, obviously, the World Cup, which we referred to. We've done better with the matches that are now scheduled to take place early next year than was the case if it had taken place in 2021. We've got seven matches. The highlight for us in lots of ways is New Zealand versus Australia, which is on Sunday the 13th of March. But we've got Australia playing four of their games here, and potentially even a semi-final. So, you know, they're one of the best teams. So that'll be fantastic for the basin, fantastic for the city. We just have our fingers crossed, of course, that the tournament can take place, whilst it's a long way away, and you might think that that should be pretty achievable. There will be qualifiers that have to play, be played before the other teams can be organized, and, you know, if they're still quarantined, that will make it problematic. So anyway, that's the plan. As a consequence of the World Cup, the basin is not available for an extended period of time, not just the six weeks, the 12 months. time, not just the six weeks of the tournament, but we have to make it available to them before the tournament starts and afterwards. So we don't have any international cricket scheduled, but we are in discussions with New Zealand Cricket around a South African match in February. And as a consequence, obviously, the venue's out for other purposes, but that's, so that's a highlight and a key focus for 2021. The other key focuses are the redevelopment projects, the embankment toilet upgrade, which is largely being handled by Warwick and his team. And we're obviously targeting to have that completed well before the Women's World Cup. Also doing some enhancements to the media box, which is the area in the back of the barn stand. And once again, that's a project that's being run by council officers. And the third of the projects that's referred to in the SOI, which I'm sure we'll get completed within the period of 2122, is the wifi connectivity. And we're doing that in conjunction with a commercial partner. And we're hoping that there'll be some other benefits that come back to the trust in respect of that project. So the, the other major enhancements that are, if you like, on our list are there, they won't necessarily be progressed very far in the 2022 period. And at our last meeting on the 26th of March, Warwick produced quite a detailed asset management plan for the, for the assets that are at the basin, most of which are on the council's books. And management are in the process now of breaking that down into a year-by-year responsibility. So what have we got to do in, in the 12 months to, to June 22 and so forth, and putting a number around that. So we don't have that detail, but I think at long last, we have an asset management plan that means that the assets that are at the basin will be maintained in appropriate fashion. So Jenny, that's, that's a quick summary of where we're at and where we're looking to be at June 22, having to take any questions except from councillor Rush, as he's a fellow trustee with me, he can, he'll know the answers.
Thank you very much. I guess one of my first questions was, was trying to understand what, what, if any, kind of capital maintenance has to happen before the ICC. So you've talked about, but you've talked about a few of those things, but can you just let us clarify if there's any specific work that has to happen before the ICC tournament and how we're on track for that?
The media box is part of that and that's underway and we're on track. And I think the toilet upgrade is not a requirement, but it's one of those things that obviously we want to do. The changing rooms were upgraded and, you know, that was with government assistance and funding. And, and obviously was a sort of a key project in respect of making sure the facilities are appropriate. Yeah.
Thank you. I've got a question from councillor O'Neill.
I was at the Peachy Keen Festival just this last past Easter weekend, which was an awesome, awesome event to go to, by the way. My question was around waste and waste management. And I know that the event is quite new, but I wondered if there were more incentives that we could work with you as a council to encourage more waste-free events? Or, you know, for example, at Kibodupu, we had a whole bunch of permanent and reusable plastic cups rather than the alternative cans everywhere. What's some of the thinking around zero-waste events?
Yeah, so Black and Gold have the ability to provide hospitality and so forth at the basin, and we're working with them at the moment. I'd have to say that that work hasn't specifically included something like the concert that you've referred to on the 3rd of March, but they, they have the ability to use the facilities for events, a whole range of events, including, you know, people who were donating blood over a period of time. And that, I mentioned that because as a result of that, we, we got some interesting information about the use of various products and services. So anyway, in summary, the team are working with Black and Gold to try and reduce the waste. I haven't had a report in terms of the concert. We were pleased it went off reasonably well, and I say that because I think on the 26th of March, we weren't sure that, that they were going to get up and be able to hold the concert. So, so it was great that it was held, four and a half thousand people, I think, were there. But I'll make a note in terms of that waste question around concerts, as you'll appreciate, we don't have a lot of concerts as such, but I think the same comment applies actually to any events that we hold there.
Councillor Foo.
Yes, and congratulations on working with Black and Gold and seeking out other opportunities for events at, such an amazing place to have them. So it's wonderful to see it utilised. And my daughters were there over the weekend as well for that concert, so it was great to see them engaging. They're not with the ICC International Cricket Team, so it's another way that they can get involved. I guess my, so I've got two questions. One is around risk, like just if for some reason the tournament can't go ahead, have you got a B plan for just possibly reserving dates or, or anything, yeah, a B plan for that?
No, we don't have a B plan. I think we would need to work in with New Zealand Cricket. New Zealand Cricket were pretty successful this year in terms of working with the government. Some people would say they were too successful in terms of providing cricket at the expense of other things that could have taken place. But no, there, there isn't a B plan at all. And any New Zealand, sorry, any international cricket that New Zealand has scheduled next year will be allocated elsewhere. So we are a bit exposed if it doesn't take place.
Yeah, okay. Good luck with that. And another question is around the SOI and the integration of Tiata Kura. And as Terry's pointed out, just observing that, yeah, best practice is, is being expected now in the way we're running events, but also getting to. And with my creative hat, I was cycling to work this morning and went through the basin and thought, yeah, basin's in a wonderful position to promote, say, you know, ideas like basin by bus, you know, get to the basin by bus, or get to the basin by bike. So just wanted to float that, you know, there's an opportunity, I respect the marketing budget may not be as extensive, but just that there is an opportunity to communicate and show some leadership around those things for the Basin Reserve with all these amazing events that are starting to happen.
Yeah. You appreciate that when it comes to events, we don't run the event as such, so we contract out the, the ground and the facilities to New Zealand Cricket, in this case, the concert promoter. But I think it's certainly something that we could include in the terms of reference with them. Of course, most people walk to the basin, because this is nice and handy, one of the advantages of living in paradise.
Maybe Greater Wellington might give you a bus sponsorship along the side.
Just on the question sponsor, I think we're up to something like party 73 that we've talked to in terms of the naming rights for the basin. But when I or my colleagues are next with you, we might be able to say that we do have a naming rights sponsor for the basin. So some progress, perhaps not too far away.
We do wish you all the best for that. You've been really persistent.
I was about to say.
The right one's coming, we know it.
I also just wanted to say, I so value and impressed with the persistence that you've had there. It's, you know, I really appreciate it.
Cricket Wellington managed the facility on behalf of the trust and I think they do a good job and I think we can all be proud of the asset that's there. And I'm, I'm looking at Warwick and not saying this just because he's here, but I think the team from the council have done an amazing job in getting it up to spec, because 10 or 12 years ago, it wasn't in the best of shape, so.
I have a question about some of the KPIs that are in the, the draft SOI. And the one I'm looking at is the, the target for the number of function days. And I was just wondering why it's, it's gone down. So the actual for 2020 and the forecast for this year was 76, but then we've gone down to 40 and 40 and 50. I was just curious why we're expecting a drop-off.
And, and the SOI, yeah, that's simply because the basin will be out of commission for that period of time. So when the Women's World Cup's on, we won't be able to hold any other events.
Okay, but that, it's, it seems to continue for the next following couple of years as well. So it's 2022, it's 40, 2023, it's 40, 2024, it's 50.
Sorry, Jenny, it's a detail I'd need to come back to you on, yeah. But I know that next year, particularly 2022, will be impacted.
Yeah, that makes sense, because if you, the whole, the whole ground's kind of out of commission, does that mean you can't have functions in that space during that time, I imagine?
Yeah.
Because they need the whole, the whole space.
Yep, they, they have the ground, that's part of the deal. And they, they're paying for it too. So we've, you know, got the opportunity to, to pass off some costs and so forth. But it is, as councillor Foo said, it effectively represents quite a risk for us if the event doesn't take place.
Yeah. Councillor, councillor Rush, despite.
He's going to make a comment. We, we don't get a deposit from New Zealand Cricket, do we?
No, no. But, but to that, if that's a reference to the World Cup, we had some costs in terms of the tournament was supposed to take place this year, those costs were reimbursed. So eventually back through ICC. Yeah. So we won't, it won't cost us any money, but there'll be a lost revenue opportunity.
Yeah. All right. Thank you very much, Alan, and thank you for coming in on, on short notice and being able to, to give us a great update on everything that's going on.
And answer some of the questions.
Yes, absolutely. Thanks, everyone, all the ACCO Fano who've come in to talk to us today. We're going into more of the boring, you know, part of the meeting, so I'll, I'll let you go off to the rest of your days and lives, as we have to stay here and actually vote on things and some formalities. Lovely to see you all, thank you for coming. Actually, should we just take a five-minute adjournment? Let's take a five-minute adjournment and we'll be back in five, we'll be back about Thank you. Kia ora. All right, so we're going to move our actual papers. So I will move the review of the quarter two reports for the council-controlled organisations. Is there any second for the motion, please? Thank you, councillor Young. Is there any debate for on the quarter two reports, councillors? There being none. I will put the motion, let's vote. These are working now. So you can't raise your hands now. I will put the motion, let's vote. These are working now. So you can't raise your hands now. And then I will move the motion of the review of the half-year report of the Wellington Regional Stadium Trust for the period ending 31st December 2020. Can I have a second for that, please? Thank you, councillor Rush. Is there any debate on those recommendations?